Check, do a check on everybody who is not in our room. I'm gonna go left to right from what's in front of me on the computer. And it just disappeared. Oh. And then if you can confirm that you can hear me with an audible yes. And as I continue to call the folks, if you can't hear them, let me know. But I'm gonna assume that you can. First one I see over there is Mike Stenson, who... Where is Mike Stenson?
Over at the podium.
Oh, there he is. Okay.
Yes.
Oh, there you go. Okay. Alderman Cahill. Alderman Cahill? Well, see, that's why we're doing the check.
Yeah.
Alderman Brennan.
I can hear you.
Alderman Deuter.
Yes, I can hear you.
Alderman Palmsky.
I can hear you.
Alderman Toluado.
Yep.
Clark Tamer. Alderman Mark.
I can hear you.
Treasurer Leibovitz. Fantastic. Alderman Kennedy.
Can you hear you, Mayor?
See you during the stream.
God, does he hear us? Okay. Alderman Hill.
Hi, can hear you.
Alderman Lott.
Hi, can hear you.
Alderman Harper. Chief Peres. Alderman Veremis.
What's that for you?
It says I need grants, but it looks a lot like Alderman's government. That's sizing trends and bar down our... Alderman McQuauley. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I can hear you.
Alderman Brennan. Mike Kopp over in our annex. Okay, I think that's everybody. I will remind you, if you are not speaking, to please mute your microphones. Alderman Palmsky and Treasurer Leibovitz, if you can do that, that'd be great. Okay, I would ask that you all rise and join me to pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, before I ask a clerk tamer to call the roll, I want to tell a couple of folks in the audience something. So, as you can tell, things aren't normal when it comes to our audio and our visual as it relates to our meetings. So, some of us are present and some of us are not present, but around. And literally, the government wrote a special order so that we can attend this way. Did that about a year ago. My point is that you in the audience will not be able to hear the direct feedback from the... If you want to hear the fascinating...
Here, here. 14 present, 0 absent.
I will continue to work through these audio challenges. Did these all of a sudden come on? Okay, okay. How many did you say, clerk tamer? 14 present, 0 absent. We are in session, on to agenda item 3. This is an announcement, it's the Illinois Association of Museum Awards. Dave Olberg and Dan Lund and Jesse Wandersee to... We have some very exciting news. Thank you. Is this on, is this on? Oh, I can hear myself. Yeah, yeah. What's going on, what's going on? Oh, oh. Can we blame anybody in particular? Did I leave mine on? After all that complaining? Wow, wow. Well, we're gonna model through these challenges because it doesn't change why we're here. So, we have Dave Olberg, who's the head of our museum. We also have curator of collections, Dan Lund, and supervisor of education services, Jesse Wandersee. And just recently, in February, early February, our history museum, the hard work, the people you see here, received two very prestigious awards. They're both kind of related to the schoolhouse, huh? So, one is how awesome the old house is and our video saying how awesome the restoration is. And the other is how we utilize the old house for during COVID and how we got created with it. So, I'm gonna mess it up by talking any further. But I think it's important that we recognize these folks for the hard work that they do. In addition, I want to put a plug for Dave Olberg. When this pandemic hit, not only did Dave figure out how to pivot him and his entire staff, but Dave also became kind of an immediate non-sight historian. And whether or not the council or city knows it, Dave has been historically recording everything that we've been doing through this whole pandemic. This is pretty much new for all of us and people and future of our household. Need to know how we did it all. I want to thank you, Dave, for your hard work. And you two folks for getting these awards. I'll turn it over to you, Dave. Oh, oh. And awards aren't physically in hand because COVID.
All right, thanks for the opportunity. I'm pleased to announce that the Elmer's Museum, two major award association museums, at the virtual conference on Thursday, February 4. The Elmer's Museum received an award of superior achievement, special project documentary created by curator Dan Lund. The documentary commemorates the 10th anniversary of the restoration of the Church of the Wonder Room Schoolhouse, leaving together, interview footage with stakeholders, historic images, music, and narrative. The award of superior achievement is the Illinois Association's highest award. And only one award of superior achievement is given annually per category to one of Illinois' more than 1,000 museums. Projects receive an award of superior achievement or considered to be a model for the museum community. In addition, the Elmer's Museum received an award of excellence for COVID-19 response programming, groundbreaking, 2020 Churchville Wonder Room Schoolhouse field trip, developed by supervisor of education services Jesse Wandersee. And this project shares video footage of Wandersee at the schoolhouse, providing an engaging overview, follow-up lessons, friendly to distance learning platforms, live Q and A session for students, and with Wandersee at the very end. And less than 20 of those awards were given this year in the entire state. Both projects were developed quickly in-house, and are testament to creativity and innovation of the museum team. And I'm gonna get emotional here, but I gotta tell you, getting this face here, but a joy was to see their faces virtually. We're live. Just gave us all, it's the end of the year, a booklet to write our thoughts in, which said, "Tough times don't last, tough teams too." And this is the toughest team I've ever worked with. Thank you very much, your hard work. And now you should all receive your annual museum. If you have a look at all the great things that they've been doing as well. Would you like to play some? Please, please. Nothing like having a spot.
Thank you for the opportunity to recognize our achievements tonight. We all know it's been a very hard, very hard year. We never really worked video productions before, so they obviously turned out all right. So, we're just happy to be able to contribute these stories to the Elmer's community.
Thank you. It's been a challenging year, but we have found ways to innovate that I think will lead us into the future, even when COVID's over, in order to do more innovative things forward. We really appreciate the city's support and of course, the support of the Elmer's Heritage Foundation as well. So, thank you very much.
Marley, we need that extra to walk around and check around the museum. Obviously, that's not gonna happen. So, one more round of applause. Thanks, everybody. Mike, can you turn some...
Okay, that does it for agenda item 3, on to agenda item 4, receipt of written communications from public. At this time, is there anybody in the audience who has any written communication they wish to submit? If so, please raise your hand. Mr. Kopp over there in your annex, is there anybody who has any written communication?
No, there is not.
Okay, that concludes agenda item 4, on to agenda item 5, public forum. This is an opportunity for anybody in the audience or potentially dialed in, to have an opportunity to address the council on any item they so choose. We ask that you direct your comments to the chair of the meeting. Out of respect for work that we have to get done this evening, respect for others who may want to speak, we ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. I will keep time, and if you go over, I will give you a gentle reminder and ask you to wrap up. We are recording this, so when you get called to the microphone, we ask that you state your name. Your address is optional. Clerk Tamer, do we have anybody signed up tonight?
Yes, Mayor. We have Rowan Hoppy.
Fantastic. Rowan, right over there next to Mr. Olberg is a microphone by that chair. And you or your dad can pull that down so we can hear you. Good yank there, okay. And go ahead and you can speak.
Um, okay.
Oh, hold on, hold on. I don't think that mic, I don't think that's on. Do we have a... Rowan, as you've seen all night, we're challenged. Uh, where's Mike? Let's see. Is that mic not hot at all? Uh, we're working on it, ladies and gentlemen.
Hello?
This is what we've done for the last year with COVID. So, we overcome and we adapt. Oh, that's good. That's really good. All I need you to do, Jim, is turn on the microphone. Okay, okay. All right, Rowan, I...
Um, um.
You're good.
Hello, I'm from City Council. My name is Rowan Hoppy, and I would like to propose the banning of plastic bags. They're bad for humanity because they don't decompose, they break up. And just to do that, it takes about 500 of more years. This can leave nature unable to eat them and become toxic. The toxins can kill them in the plastic and clog their stomachs. Plastic bags make it great lakes, it needs to hear 2.2 million pounds of plastic enters them. And plastic bags can account for a part of that. Those bags flood into the ocean. And fossil fuels are used to make plastic bags, so you're also contributing to climate change. Banning plastic bags is a big transformation. So, you might be wondering what the replacement will be. Paper bags and reusable shopping bags could definitely work. Eight states have already banned plastic bags, such as California, Connecticut, Delaware, Hawaii, Maine, New York, Oregon, and Vermont. Someone be out of the ordinary with the ban. And Elmer's. I think that the ban of plastic bags can save our environment and make us proud.
Rowan, that was fantastic. I normally don't ask questions, but do you go to school here in Elmer's?
Yes, yes.
Where do you go to school?
Hawthorne Elementary.
And what grade are you in?
Fourth grade.
Fantastic. Can you tell us the audience that it came with you?
My mom, my sister, and my dad.
Thank you so much, Rowan. I just want to thank you so much for coming. And I really take the hurt which I've said. I think this is a great example of what people can do. Come talking to the government and get things started. And I can say with confidence that that is the best speech we're gonna hear tonight. That is the best speech of tonight. So, thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Clerk Tamer, do we have anybody else signed up?
I think in the annex, we have Sean Benson.
Mr. Kopp, Sean Benson on the line there.
No, there was nobody on the line for comment.
It was submitted then.
Okay, Jim, do we have anybody here?
Okay, Jim, do we have anybody here? Oh, it was submitted. Written comments? Okay, okay.
Yes, I thought he was also calling. I apologize.
Okay, so clerk Tamer, besides that, is there anybody else who signed up?
No, 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 Mayor.
Okay, okay. Mike Kopp. Mike Kopp, can you do a roll call and just double check and see if there's anybody who wants to chime in?
No, there is not.
Okay, okay. That concludes public forum for this evening, we're on to consent agenda. At this time, is there any item on the consent agenda? Item, item. On the consent agenda, anybody wants to see removed? Provided for the comment or vote. No, no. I see Alderman Bram. Alderman Bram.
619 and 620.
Got it, got it. Hold on. Okay, 619 and 620, anybody else? Have anything they wish to have removed from the consent agenda? I do not see anybody on camera or in hand races. Okay, I'll now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda minus items 619 and 620. Motion by... Who's motioning? Alderman Toluado. Motion by Alderman Veremis. Clerk Tamer, please call the vote.
Cahill? Toluado? Aye. Harth?
Aye.
Oven?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Conquest?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Mulliner?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Veremis?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Bram?
Aye.
Palmsky?
Aye.
14 ayes, 0 nays.
14 ayes, 0 nays. Consent agenda minus items 19 and 20 are approved. Alderman Cahill and Alderman Bram, your mics are hot. On to agenda item 6.19, this is an ordinance, I'd ask clerk Tamer to read the ordinance.
An ordinance amending section 16.11 entitled Service Charges of Chapter 16 entitled Garbage and Rubbish of the Municipal Code of Ordances of the City of Elmer's, Illinois.
Okay, to put this before council, I will ask for a motion to approve the ordinance as read. Motion by Alderman Kennedy, second by Alderman Brennan. Alderman Kennedy, your ordinance.
Muted.
Okay, didn't have enough time to tell you you were muted, but I will relay that he said he's going to defer to Alderman Bram. Alderman Bram, there you go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Like I've stated previously, I believe that these rates are inequitable for the smaller toters versus the larger toters. I won't say any more than that, so my position would be not to support this report.
Okay, any additional comments? Alderman Kennedy, your mic is hot. Are you telling me you want to talk?
No, thank you.
Okay. Alderman Palmsky.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to touch on this, this topic comes up periodically as we take a look at these rates. I just want to speak to a couple of comments that have been made along the way. I know when we have a fee, nobody wants to impose a fee. But as we do with other services and with waste and refuse, we take a look at what it costs and we do a pass-through cost. So, here, there are different sized toters, but while there is a difference, there isn't too much of a difference in the work that staff do to administer the service and for what we are charged for it. There is some discussion about sustainability, and I know that we have a visitor here tonight focusing on that. I just wanted to touch on how this decision may or may not relate to sustainability. In trying to learn how the city can encourage people to use less and to decrease waste, some of what we have learned is that that is best achieved through education and also through opportunities for recycling and for composting. So, with education, we have some education initiatives, but we could always do more. And sometimes we can tap into some groups of residents to help us with that, and we always welcome that. So, that's something we always can continue and do better at. And two things that the city has done is offered recycling at no cost, although I anticipate that will change the way in which we provide a recycling, but that serves to encourage people to have less waste. And additionally, the addition of the paper for service, I guess, per use composting. So, it's, I just want our residents to know that we recognize and we appreciate efforts to want to reduce waste, and we hear you and we are addressing those. These pass-through costs are not directly tied to these initiatives. Thank you.
Okay, any additional comments? Nope. Alderman Bram, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have, as Alderman Palmsky pointed out, talked about this many times in the past years. In regards to sustainability, we should be promoting smaller toters versus charging almost the same price for smaller toters than the larger toters. That's not promoting sustainability. Of course, education is a piece of it, but it's not the only piece. Equitable cost across all toters is the other piece. I have been spoken to by a lot of different residents that they would go to the smaller toter, especially seniors. And I think this is not a fair rate for senior citizens who would prefer the smaller toter. That's easier to maneuver, they generate less rate, refuse, but we're still charging pretty close to the same rate as the next size up. I don't think this talks to sustainability at all, according to the rates that we're imposing on our own residents. In regards to staff costs, we're allocating, I believe, if my memory serves me correctly, one full-time staff person cost for refuse and recycling. I've said this when I was in the Public Works Committee, and I'll say it here tonight since it's been brought up, that there is no way that we are utilizing one person 40 hours a week to answer questions or handle things for refuse and recycling.
or handle things for refuse and recycling. To me, that's not equitable pass through. Um, I do understand we have to cover staff costs and we have to divide it up, uh, over the various departments. But let's, let's make it clear that right now, what we're seeing is one full-time staff individual for refuse and recycling because that's part of the dollar amount in its entirety. Dumping fees, dumping fees are not equitable. Yes, I, I believe as Alderman Kennedy, uh, last time I brought this topic up and I, I agree wholeheartedly with him. He stated that, that is essentially the same work by the refuse personnel. And I don't disagree, they have to come to the same location, they're using the same gas. I, I don't agree with that, I, I don't disagree with that. But I, I will say that dumping fees is a large part of that. When we had allied, I believe they were called allied at the time, when we had ally come to the Public Works meeting to discuss this, I asked the very direct question, and where are you coming up with the per cost for each size of these toters? He didn't answer, I put my finger up in the air and he agreed with me. He said that really it was about the total amount being paid and not about the per toter size. So the, the refuse provider was saying that it's more about the total cost, not a toter size. So to hang our hat on that point of view, when the provider themselves said that that's not relevant. It, it's not, it's not an accurate statement. The last thing I'll say is back to seniors. This is not fair to seniors to be charging you at almost the same price that we charge to larger toters. They would be willing to utilize this toter if it actually wasn't equitable price. I will not be supporting this, thank you very much for your time.
Any additional comments? Seeing none, ask, ask. Clerk Tamer to call the vote.
Cahill?
Aye, aye.
Toledo?
Toledo? Aye, aye.
Harp?
Harp? Aye, aye.
Levin?
Levin? Aye, aye.
Kennedy?
Kennedy? Aye, aye.
Hanquist?
Hanquist? Aye, aye.
Brennan?
Brennan? Aye, aye.
Mulliner?
Mulliner? Aye, aye.
Joyder?
Joyder? Aye, aye.
Veremis?
Veremis? Aye, aye.
Hill?
Hill? Aye, aye.
Dunn?
Dunn? Aye, aye.
Bram?
Bram?
Palomsky?
Palomsky? Aye, aye.
Thirteen ayes, one nay.
Thirteen ayes, one nay, motion carries. Agenda item six point one nine is approved. On to agenda item, six point two zero. This is an ordinance, I would ask, I would ask Clerk Tamer to read the ordinance.
An ordinance extending temporary executive powers pursuant to section three point one six of Elmhurst Municipal Code. In pursuit to sixty five I L C S, five forward slash eleven dash one dash six.
Okay, to put this before council, I will ask for a motion to approve the ordinance as read. Motion by Alderman Levin, second by Alderman Mulliner. Alderman Levin, any comments?
No, this is just the same ordinance we've been passing for multiple weeks that allows the mayor to exercise uh, executive authority if and when needed.
Any additional comments? Alderman Bram?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, as I've said in previous meetings, I don't believe this is needed. It's been demonstrated by, uh, the mayor himself not needing to execute this or utilize this since last year, I believe in October. It also is demonstrated even here tonight at the city council meeting to see the majority of the aldermen present at city hall, that we are on the upswing of the pandemic. Uh, I don't see the reason to continue to grant these executive powers when it's been demonstrated by the mayor himself. There's no need and obviously by, uh, the elected officials, by, uh, the majority being at city hall showing that the, uh, pandemic is hopefully permanently on the downswing.
Any additional comments? Alderman Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe, uh, this is just another tool in the toolbox. I think it makes sense for this to stay until the governor, uh, pulls back on his disaster declaration. Uh, if you're watching the news, Europe is in its third wave, so it doesn't mean we're out of the woods. We just happen to have been lucky enough to vaccinate more of our populace than Europe has. So, uh, until the governor says we're out of it, I think, uh, we should continue with having these tools in our arsenal. Thank you.
Okay, any additional comments? Alderman Bram?
I'll just say one other comment to that, uh, point is that most communities are not implementing an executive order at this time. I, I am aware of a handful, uh, but most are not utilizing, um, such powers.
Okay, any additional comments? Seeing none, I'll ask Clerk Tamer to call the vote.
Cahill?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Harp?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Hanquist?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Mulliner?
Aye.
Joyder?
Aye.
Veremis?
Aye.
Hill? Dunn?
Aye.
Bram?
No.
Palomsky?
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, one nay.
Thirteen ayes, one nay, motion carries, agenda item six point two oh is approved. On to agenda item seven, committee reports, seven point one is a report out of finance. I'm going to ask Clerk Tamer to read the recommendation.
It is therefore the recommendation of the Finance Council Affairs Administrative Services Committee that the city council authorized the refunding of the 2012 general obligation bond issue and authorized the addition of four million dollars in bonds to the refunded bond issue to be used to finance the McKinley and Utley Stormwater Pumping Stations.
To put this before council, I'll ask for a motion to, uh, approve, a motion and a second to approve the report and recommendation as read. Motion by Alderman Toledo, second by Alderman Levin. Alderman Toledo, your report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was going to talk without my headphones, so I didn't get the feedback, but I forgot the people wouldn't be able to hear me on the Zoom. Um, so tonight we have before us a, uh, recommendation from the Finance Committee to refinance, uh, a 2012 bond issue, the remaining principal on that bond issue at, uh, savings to the city of approximately $200,000. In addition to that, because, um, we basically have to pay the fixed costs to issue the bonds and we have two high priority capital projects that will, um, help to, uh, prevent flooding. Uh, if, well, if they're rehabilitated, these storm stations, um, will prevent flooding. If they fail, they will cause flooding. Uh, these are two of our top priority capital projects. Um, so since we are already issuing the bonds, we can go up to $10 million and stay under our, um, tax-free bond, um, status with the $10 million issue. So we are recommending that we add an additional four million to this issue to, um, save the cost of the issuance of issuing only one issue this year. Um, and, um, paying for those important capital projects. I will make a comment that the bond issue, the bond market has been quite volatile in the last couple of weeks. Um, if the refunding, if the yields go up so that the refunding does not make sense anymore, we can still pull that back, the city council will have an opportunity to, um, sign off or not on a final bond issue when they are sold in the market, if we move forward with that. So I will take any questions, um, otherwise I hope to have everyone's support, thank you.
Additional comments or questions, I see Alderman Levin has his hand up. Floor is yours.
Um, I just want to add one thing that I think might be significant to that report and that is, um, we were advised by our consultant that, um, bond, uh, rates are a very low point right now. So it also makes sense to lock in and get those additional funds now, even though the market's volatile. Uh, it's expected that those rates could go up, so instead of waiting till later in the year um, and having to pay more of a rate, um, it's also makes sense to lock in at a low rate if that occurs this year. But, uh, otherwise I wholly support this, thank you.
Additional comments or questions? I don't see anybody, city manager. Clerk Tamer, I'd ask you to call the roll, call the.
Cahill?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Harp?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Hanquist?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Mulliner?
Aye.
Joyder?
Aye.
Veremis?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Bram?
Aye.
Palomsky?
Aye.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays, motion carries, agenda item seven point one is approved. Undo seven point two, this is a report out of Public Works, I would ask Clerk Tamer to read the recommendation.
It is therefore the recommendation of the Public Works and Buildings Committee that the city council authorized the city manager to proceed with hiring and alternative service delivery options as presented.
To put this before council, I will ask for a motion to approve the report and recommendation as read. Motion by Alderman Kennedy, second by Alderman Brennan. Alderman Kennedy, your report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the fourth quarter of 2020, uh, referral was put through to look at the, uh, the city's, um, services and staffing, which were put on hold as part of the, uh, response to the, um, COVID-19 pandemic. Uh, at that time, you know, we had identified we had about a $9 million gap. And, uh, again, we asked the city staff to hold on filling any of the open positions. So, um, through, through a hiring freeze, as it, as it came to the committee, uh, it, um, added up to a total of 24 full-time positions and 10 part-time positions that we reviewed. Um, city manager Grabowski and his team, uh, looked at every vacant position to determine, number one, if the function of the vacant role was necessary. Number two, if it, if it is, which methods, um, are available to fill the role? Number three, which of the methods are the most cost efficient while providing responsive and superior governmental services as written in our mission statement? So city staff went and did those things, uh, they've come back with, um, what they've done is to eliminate a number of those positions, actually one, which was the, uh, police service officer for parking enforcement, uh, not as, as great of a need there. And we've done some things with technology to help reduce that need. Um, we had four positions that we proposed to have, um, converted, uh, to private sector contracts with the, um, remaining, uh, positions to be, um, filled through full-time hires. And, and, and the staff did a really good job of comparing what made sense, you know, if we went out and we decided to hire consultants or to go have to pay prevailing wage, what was going to be the best deal for us? And, and, and that's what, uh, what staff did with Stan and Jim and others to, to help make that happen. So, um, in the end, the plan is to, uh, kind of as outlined before, um, we've, we've eliminated a position. We've, we've moved some to outside, those being the, um, Assistant Finance Director, the GIS Specialist, a Utility Capital Projects Administrator and the EBT Certified Mechanic. Those are all now going to be handled by outside contracts and the, uh, the remaining positions, um, based on this report is they would be hired. Um, one thing of note, that 10 of these positions are interns, so they have always been a good source of, uh, good, uh, good contributions, so we want to bring those roles back through, uh, they're in engineering, they're in roles in public works, finance and HR. So by, um, by moving forward with this, we'll, we'll get the right people in the right positions and then that result will be a savings of approximately $218,000. Thank you.
Okay, any additional comments or questions? Alderman Levin?
Um, I was a little surprised to see how the referral proceeded. I thought it was going to go, um, to each of the committees that would be affected by the proposed staffing changes in particular. Um, when I saw the report, I was surprised that we were recommending a, uh, conversion of the Assistant Finance Director to a contract position. Uh, I've been working with the Assistant Finance Director for a couple of meetings and never realized that she was, uh, essentially our contract person. Um, but that being said, I talked to city manager today and I will support this report, but he assured me that, that is a topic that if it doesn't make sense in the future as we look how we will staff finance, that, uh, we can adjust it. I only say that so that if I make a proposal or raise a question sometime in the future, people and say, why didn't you say something when we passed that? So I'm saying it now, I support it now, but, um, having had no opportunity to really discuss it, um, I want to keep an eye on it for the future, but, uh, I will support this report, thank you.
Any additional comments? I don't see anybody, Jim. Clerk Tamer, I'd ask you to call the vote.
Cahill?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Harp?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Hanquist?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Mulliner?
Aye.
Joyder?
Aye.
Veremis?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Bram?
Aye.
Palomsky?
Aye.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays, motion carries, agenda item seven point two is approved. Onto, uh, agenda item eight, reports and recommendations of appointed and elected officials. Mayor Morley, that's me. Okay, um, my report, I kind of want to do a little bit of a recap of, um, some of the stuff that just happened in the meeting. Cause I think it's important to point out, um, what staff and elected officials have been doing. So in 2020, everyone is aware that, um, it was a tough year and we were faced with COVID uh, and faced with something that we'd never had to deal with before, dealing with executive orders from the federal level and the state level and having to react accordingly. One thing that staff and council did very early on, um, is recognize that we could potentially be facing a shortfall in our revenues. So between staff and council, a lot of work was done, uh, reviewing what projects potentially could be put on hold. Uh, we had a hiring freeze, among other things. Um, so that's just, I don't want to get into the hundred things we did to try to right the ship uh, as revenue went down and, uh, basically our town shut down. But, uh, we did a lot of hard work in 2020. Uh, as required by state law, we are required to pass a budget every year. Well, the good news is, is that, uh, our budget coincides with our calendar year. So at the end of 2020, when there was a little bit of a bright spot in the fight against COVID, we passed our budget and we also passed our levy. Um, and with the help of, uh, some funding from the federal government through, um, DuPage County, uh, the city did okay. In addition, um, a credit to staff and past council members and current council members, we were in a very difficult financial position back in 2007, 2008, 2009. And through some very aggressive and conservative planning, it has put us in good shape to weather this storm in the short term. Kind of a rainy day planning sort of thing. So our, uh, general fund, which is our checkbook, is at the high end of what our policy states. But in reviewing our finances, uh, and reviewing shortfalls that we will continue to see and also obligations for, uh, stormwater projects, among other things, um, we are recognizing that there is going to be a potential shortfall between the revenue we take in and the spending we have. So, um, a good chunk of aldermen at the beginning of December of last year put through six referrals in an effort to take a look at our spending. Now, when you have a shortfall, you can look at spending or you can look at revenue. Revenue means taxes. And I think without exception, every alderman who was involved in these these conversations early on felt that we need to exhaust all review of potential spending cuts or any potential wasteful spending or even creative ways we can do things. For example, the how we handle credit card fees as it relates to paying bills. Stuff like that where changes can be made and the City of Elmhurst can literally save hundreds of thousands of dollars. So six referrals were put in at the beginning of December. I want to, I'm having this report because I want to call out two of the referrals kind of came to fruition. We're going to have, obviously, we're going to have follow-up ordinances, but the credit card fees and also the, Alderman Levin, you have turned your mic on. The credit card fees and also the staffing, which Mr. Kennedy just reviewed, are to our completion of two of the referrals. We'll vote on them again two weeks from now, but I wanted to point that out and say that I appreciate all of the hard work that staff and city council and then the respective committees have done in really looking ahead to our forecast and being proactive in how we're going to handle city finances. There's still a whole lot of work to do on the referrals that were put in place or the referrals that are still being considered. And that is it. Oh, one last thing, sorry. I continue to say this and we reference it. But really, we get weekly allocations of the COVID vaccine and really the best source. First and foremost, you should definitely register with the county, go to the county website, DuPage County Health website for updates and availability. In addition, there are some opportunities and in private locations, whether it's hospitals or pharmacies, to potentially sign up for COVID vaccines. And that's it for me, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few things. As you just said, I want to thank city staff for all the work that they put in regarding those referrals. I know there's more work to do, but something that, a term that we've used as we've been looking at this is alternative service delivery and how we can do that. And something that I've coined with the staff is forced innovation. That's what this pandemic has done certainly, and it's given us the opportunity to look at things in a different light. So thank you, and I want to, in particular, call out one staff member, Tom Truzin, who's worked very diligently. And this week, Tom will celebrate thirty years with the city, so. If you see, email him, please wish him congratulations on thirty years. A few other things, a couple of meetings ago, the City Council approved a change in the aggregation program to move from MC squared to a Chicago-based supplier named Iligo Energy. Letters will be going out this week, if they haven't already, to all of the residents regarding the program. They will not be going door-to-door. They never have. They certainly will not start. And I just want people to be aware that if you are approached by someone, it is not the city contract. And so be aware of that, and if you see a solicitor that doesn't have a badge or registration, please call the police department so we can follow up on that. Two other things, vehicle stickers are on sale right now. They need to be applied to the vehicles by May first, so please be aware of that. And then last, our spring cleanup has been scheduled for consecutive Saturdays in April. I know people like to get a head start on that, so April 10th will be the first one, and that'll be for residents with a Friday pickup. April 17th will be residents with a Thursday pickup. And April 24th will be residents with a Wednesday pickup. All that information is on the city website, and I would encourage you to look there for more details. Thank you.
Alderman Toledo, you wish to add to the conversation?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for your comments on the two reports. I just wanted to put a fine point on it and add at the time, Alderman Kennedy and his committee's report, as well as myself and my committee's report totals to almost an annual annualized savings of $500,000 between the two of those reports. And that's not a one-time savings, that's a structural change in how we operate the city. So those will be realized every year moving forward. Thank you.
Well said. Anyone else? Okay, we're going to move on to agenda item eight, agenda item eight point three. This is an update. Occasionally, we'll do this. A lot of times, it comes out of Public Works. If a committee is going over something and they're getting a lot of questions or comments, occasionally, committee chair will come to council and give us an update on something they're reviewing. And with that said, I am going to turn it over to Chairman Palmski to tell us what's going on at P A and S.
Okay, you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. So yes, typically, when we see an update under the section of the agenda, the reports and recommendations of appointed and elected officials, we usually hear from the mayor and city manager, but occasionally we'll hear from Chairman Kennedy with an update on public works. In this situation, because this is a topic that has generated a lot of interest and discussion and questions, including questions from members of the council, I thought it would be appropriate to give an update as to where we are in this discussion. So since January, the Public Bears and Safety has been discussing a referral which reads, and I'll read this to you. It's the nature of emergencies changes over time. The city's review of related services evolves. In addition to the standard review of fire and EMS calls, we're requesting an evaluation of types of services performed and potential alternatives for service delivery. Alternative should anticipate goal of meeting or exceeding our current safety measures and may allow for potential cost decrease and or increase in revenues available to the city and its residents. Additional areas of review may include, but are not limited to, non-emergency calls, it lists some areas where we can look into. So the idea here is to maintain or enhance our safety. But to keep in mind the underlying concerns that Alderman Toledo touched on with where the other two referrals that were just noted are taking a look at how can we change or potentially change our operations in a way that provides a cost savings? So there have been two main themes that I think have emerged, and they are gratitude and opportunity. So gratitude for staff, especially Chief Freeman, Deputy Chief Anishevitz, and Administrative Assistant Lauren Wool for their work on gathering, compiling, and presenting this data. We, last week, when we discussed this agenda item alone, that lasted two hours. And each one of our discussions on this agenda item has covered that much. I would encourage everybody to take a look on board docs for emergency response services. There are a number of documents up there available to please take a look. And I know it took a lot of time just to gather that and organize it and label it. So thank you to staff for doing that. It, with the referral guiding the discussion, we were reminded that our full-time firefighters and our contract paramedic service providers are overseen by Fire Chief Tom Freeman. So it's not that we have two separate entities that both operate out of the city. Essentially, they all fall underneath the fire chief. So this allows for the fire chief and deputy chief to oversee the day-to-day service provision. So knowing that in addition to our review, there remains the opportunity to identify and make a change in how services are set up or to alert, you know, City Manager or the council if there really needs to be a change in service provision that would require something like a contract change or a new expenditure. So we wanted to take a look at our EMS calls and their trends, alternatives for service delivery. And this is in light of our referral and also the day-to-day activities. And I want to state that it has been clear from our fire chief that it, there has been no problem identified related to service delivery. It was still reassuring for our committee, and it still remains reassuring for us to sit through all the details provided. Some of the highlights of what we learned are that first, the depth of the Elmhurst Fire Department's publication, public education programs, combined with our years of strict building codes, are understood to be the force behind our low number of building fires. So in the last two years combined, we, the City of Elmhurst firefighters responded to sixteen building fires in the city and sixty-six outside of the city for that same time period. We also understand that though we have this robust education and code, these codes here in Elmhurst, not everybody else does. But that's, it's one example that can lay the foundation for ongoing discussions, looking to see how we can ensure some maybe more equity in our mutual aid or ways in which that we can anticipate how we are going to be assisting and how we can work with other communities here in Elmhurst too. Another theme that's emerged is in reviewing the fire incident type, firefighters respond far more to activated fire alarms and good intent calls totaling 1,032 combined last year compared to 149 and 273 hazardous condition calls. So understanding that there are a number of properties that have had repeated activated fire alarms, we've begun looking at the possibility of a nuisance ordinance. We will also continue discussion on how to continue education programming in a manner to reduce unnecessary calls. Third item is that the majority of our emergency calls require, that are, that require medical attention, require basic life support. With the most frequent event requiring assistance being a fall. So we have, we looked over a breakdown of where we have, where we respond to these types of calls, and we think there may be some opportunities to work on fall prevention or other ways in which to assist people. So this is again more discussion. We also learned a little bit more about Rescue One. In 2017, we added Rescue One, which is our rapid response vehicle. Think of it as an ambulance that does not transport people. Essentially, what it does is respond to medical calls, but it does not leave city limits in Elmhurst. So while we have mutual aid agreements with our surrounding communities, Rescue One does not leave. And we have two fire stations with ambulances at each one that are stationed there. But Rescue One, the rapid response vehicle, travels back and forth between the two stations, taking the place of an ambulance in its vacancy. So it is there and it is stationed if it's not serving someone. But if there's a need for medical attention, it can respond right away. And it is able to respond quickly and more easily because it's smaller than some of the other vehicles, an ambulance or fire truck. So it can be anticipated that it will, it will arrive very quickly. And as far as taking a look at how quickly it arrives, we we knew that three years ago, or in 2017, that we largely exceeded expectations or standards for our response times. We wanted to close the gap. Essentially, we wanted to have fewer incidents where we relied upon outside communities to respond. So if we needed what would be considered a third ambulance, where both of our ambulances were tied up and that typically would push the time needed to respond over four minutes. So we wanted to make sure it, the response time was less than that. So Rescue One allows us to require fewer third ambulances. So it allows us to keep that medical attention for us to call upon it from our own paramedics and to respond more quickly. We, there are some standards that we took a look at and we far exceed the NFPA fire personnel standards. It doesn't mean that we couldn't always do better in every, you know, fire or emergency response or ways in which that we document our calls. But we do have a memo from staff or from fire chief that also was, you know, accompanied by data to say there is no, there's no new need for additional paramedic services, but if, if we are to contemplate that, we could consider another rapid response vehicle. So that is one thing that should we need it, there is an opportunity to consider another rescue rapid response vehicle. So the idea that our current firefighters who are already ALS certified to provide those services has been raised and questioned, so is that something that Elmhurst could provide? So at our, our last meeting, we learned from City Attorney Mike Durkin, who specializes in labor relations and collective bargaining, we learned about the Illinois Substitute Act that pertains to firefighters and how it has a series of potential consequences, a series of triggers that we could expect, we would expect, should we change the manner in which we're providing our currently contracted emergency medical services? So we had some explanation there. We had some examples given to us. It's not as simple as, well, we already have people who are trained. Can't we just ask them to do it? Or what if they don't ask to, you know, ask for A, B, C, and D? Can't we just make sure that, you know, we only discuss that one area somebody's asking for, or let's say our firefighters are asking for? I think we learned that this topic's a lot more complicated and it, a lot of the decisions would become out of our hands. So we helped, we, we learned a little bit more about that. But still going back to what we've been learning along the way is that we have learned that we have excellent services. We do not have a need a concern about quality. So for that, I I want to thank our firefighters and our paramedics. They both have been recognized for run of the month multiple times. And also, also of course, for their supervisors overseeing all the services. And this also brings us to staffing structure. We talked a little bit about this. And there, there appears to be the possibility for flexibility in how we allocate our supervisory roles. So that's one other thing that we will continue to discuss. So we have no conclusions yet. We have more clarification, we have more more, I guess, reassurance that our firefighters and our paramedics are doing an excellent job. And I also, I, I think we also have learned that there may be more need for communication on this topic. So I would encourage anybody with questions to please contact city staff. You can call City Manager Grabowski, you can call Fire Chief Freeman, Deputy Chief Anishevitz, and they can help walk you through it. We have a lot of information posted on board docs. There's a lot to look through. But we can help you identify the answers to the questions that you have. And if it isn't something readily available, we're happy to look for it. Thank you.
Okay, I'm sure some aldermen have some comments. Before I recognize anybody, I just want to add that and it's probably one of the more challenging things that elected officials we have to deal with. But the vast majority of the work and Alderman Palmski gave you just a sliver or a snapshot of the mountains of information that that committee's been going through over the past three meetings. I think I've attended two out of the last three meetings. And the nitty-gritty in the meat of the discussion really happens in committee. I appreciate Chairman Palmski's update, but anybody who's interested in this, I would encourage you to attend these meetings, and since we have set them up virtually, now you can do them from your house. So it's a very complex topic. There is, I don't think I'm exaggerating when I say there's hundreds of documents that you can read about this that have been generated in data. So I look forward to the committee's conclusions. I recognize their, the hill that they have to climb because they're, I don't even know if they're halfway there yet. The last thing I'll say is Alderman Palmski referenced. say is Alderman Palmski referenced ALS services and the last Public Affairs and Safety Committee meeting was actually taped, taped, I'm dating myself. It was recorded and it's on, I think it's on Elmhurst TV. And I know there's going to be some comments tonight, but literally on that one topic, committee spent two hours on it. We won't be able to cover it all tonight. So that's kind of my PSA, thanking the committee for their hard work up to date and then asking folks if they really want to dig in, there's, there's certain options to do it. Okay. Comments or questions as it relates to Alderman Palmski's, what I'll call interim report? Anybody? Do I see any hands? Okay, Alderman Bram.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'm going to actually be very careful because this is in committee. I don't want to obstruct the committee process since a report or recommendation is not before us today. So I'll just ask a couple of questions in regards to some of the statements made here tonight and also some of the statements that I caught a few minutes of the last committee discussion on this. Alderman Palmski made mention of the Substitute Act here tonight. I heard part of the discussion with the city attorney Durkin in regards to the Substitute Act. Alderman Palmski just made what I would deem to be some general comments that there's some potential consequences, which I would deem to say there's potential consequences in anything we do, including in city government and that there's triggers. So I would make a request to define what those consequences are and define what those triggers are specifically and in detail. So it's understood what is being referred there compared to the high level generality. The only other question I have, at least at this time until the report comes us, comes to us as a recommendation would be, it's my understanding, and I will ask the question, isn't it accurate that on all calls, a fire engine and a fire truck go on all calls with the ambulance service? So those are the two, one question, one request for more details on the Substitute Act and these triggers and potential consequences.
Alderman Palmski, do you want to answer the call about the fire calls? Or do you want city staff, either Mike, I'm sorry, he's Jim today, or Mr. Anishavitz, Deputy Chief Anishavitz to answer that question? You want to take it? I'll throw it to city manager on that. That's what I consider more of a city staff question. And then we'll go to the next comment. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. So yes, they do. That is a change that Chief Freeman implemented on his arrival, although they, they were going on most calls before that they do go on all calls. They provide extra hands at the scene carrying bags and also helping to lift patients.
Hey, so question one or comment one was who goes on the calls? And that's been answered. I'll paraphrase what I think Alderman Bram has said. Alderman Palmski, Alderman Bram said he attended your, or came into the tail end of your meeting and he had a question about the Substitution Act and potential consequences. And I would, I would add, I mean, certainly I'm going to let Alderman Palmski answer. But like I said, full context of that meeting is online. So go ahead, Alderman Palmski.
Thank you, Mayor. So yes, I first would direct everyone to watch the video because city attorney Durkin walked through a couple of scenarios, including a real life one with multiple appeals involved. So I would say there could be a number of triggers. And again, I'm not the attorney, but I think one, one main point would be, once a contracted service is provided by a union firefighter, it changes the flexibility that we have in maintaining that service. So that's the main trigger.
Follow up if I may, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
In regards to the answer of our fire engines and fire trucks go on every call, according to the data that was presented to us, that means that the average response time in 2020 was that our fire engines arrive on average on both sides of town. Engine one arrives earlier than medic one or the ambulance and engine two arrives earlier than medic two with already staffed individuals that have the ALS capability.
Any additional comments? Alderman Dunn.
Yes, just to follow up on one piece of data that caught my attention, the fact that there was, I think it was 66 structural fires that were outside the community and only 16 within Elmhurst in the last two years. So over 80% of the calls for that type of, you know, traditional fire emergency type call that you think of are for the communities outside of Elmhurst. Is there any, do we receive any renewed, remuneration or any type of, is there a financial true up, providing those type of services on a year after year basis where we're providing much more to the surrounding communities than our own? I was just curious.
Alderman Palmski?
Thanks. Thank you, Mayor. So that is an area for us to explore. First of all, to get a better understanding of why, when we are responding more often than we are receiving assistance, why that is. And additionally, not just with responses, there are, there are two different agreements, types of agreements. One is mutual aid where it's understood, it's a little bit more informal, but then there's automatic aid where there's more of a formal intergovernmental agreement. And I think we're going to be taking a look at what may be included in those types of agreements. But we also have in some of the documents too, some suggestions from fire chief and deputy chief about ways in which we could generate some revenue. And one of those could be, is there a different way for us to address falls or calls where it's not necessarily a true emergency and we're able to assess that in advance? And also just some alternative ways of handling service. For example, we have four trucks with specialized equipment. What if we had the trained staff to be able to service that equipment, but also provide that for other communities and charge for that service? So we're taking a look at ways in which we can make our mutual aid more equitable. Can we attach any requirements? Or any, you know, anything to those agreements? And then what, how else could we generate some revenue? So those are good questions. We don't really know yet.
Any other questions? Holman Levin.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, one comment off the bat is I think those 16 structure fires that what I was reading is they're not necessarily structured fires. It could just be a fire that's reported from a house. We don't really have any true structure fires where the house, as you picture on the TV shows, is burning down and someone's running in to, you know, put out a fire. It could be a very, it's, it's the nature of the call. So, but beyond all of that, I think I wanted to talk about-
Hold on there, Scott. Alderman Dunn, I need you to mute. Please continue.
Yeah, beyond all that, I think, you know, this has been a very heated public debate because we've got the cart in front of the horse. We're out there taking positions, various people on what is the policy should be advocating for ALS services on fire trucks. And we haven't done the analysis. And it's important, just like any other decision we make on our council, to do the analysis first and find out what is really best for the city. And there is a significant financial impact to ALS. And if we don't look at that, we're kidding ourselves. That doesn't mean that we shouldn't make sure that we meet our commitment to our residents to provide the best. Sorry, that's the police department's motto, but even in fire, we should do that. So the Substitute Act is nothing new to us. It's something that we've dealt with for years. If we don't talk about it too much, everyone knows that if we start transferring these EMT services, medical, medic services to firefighters, it becomes something that is, that we have to bargain and we cannot predict where it's going to go. The idea, just because we have firefighters going to assist in a fire, doesn't mean that the paramedic service for which we contract isn't providing high ser, high quality services. It's not that the firefighters are busy firefighting fires and we're taking them away for that. In fact, if there's a fire call that comes in, the fire truck will leave. So it's just, it was just a good policy decision by the chief to have that kind of backup to help out. We have this, the Rescue One program is an award winning program. No one else had really done it before. And I think we should, we should be congratulated for our, I mean, we can, but we, we, our staff came up with this and it's really a remarkable program and it's done a lot of very enhanced our services, I'll say.
Mayor, point of order. Are we asking questions? This is currently in committee. It sounds like Alderman Levin may be advocating for a position. My understanding is this is a review of where it's at in committee and questions only should be asked.
Well, I'm going to allow a little leeway. I didn't get a fine point on your point of order, but I don't think only questions. I think context is important as well. So noted. Alderman Levin, I ask you to continue.
All right. So yeah, the fire trucks get there, they might get there sooner. The committee will look at how often they get there sooner, whether it's 15 seconds, if it makes a difference. So I'm just, as the committee goes forward, they'll be looking at both the cost and the quality of the service. And, you know, as I, as they look at it and if we talk about how much more we could spend to have that additional edge, at a certain point, there's a diminishing return. I would suggest to you, if you say to a resident, well, shouldn't we provide the very best? Shouldn't we have, you know, paramedics on the fire engine? Shouldn't we, I would say we should have medical doctors on every fire engine because then our residents will get the absolute unparalleled best service. Because every time the ambulance or fire truck, we have an MD on there. But what's the cost? So it's, it's a balance. So I looked at, I've talked to a lot of people. I looked at most of the tape and to me, it's almost a solution looking for a problem. So I welcome the committee's final report and I hope we will hold judgment until we get that. Thank you.
Additional comments or questions? See anybody? Whoops, Alderman Bram.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank the Public Affairs and, and Safety Committee and city staff for their thoughtful work on this topic. Mayor, I did watch the tape on Elmhurst TV to quote you, and it is very informative. And there's no question, if a resident is interested in this topic, it's two hours well spent. There's a lot of information and a lot of thoughtful dialogue. You know, in respect to the, this referral, it is in committee, so I'm going to tread lightly, but just wanted to, you know, reiterate and share a couple of perspectives. The data shows our BLS and ALS services, our, our service model is exceeding national standards. I'm proud of that. I, I think that's awesome. I was supportive, in support of Rescue One back in 2017 and am very happy to see the, the results that are coming from, from that shift in, in thinking. I think Elmhurst Fire Department and, you know, Superior Metro should be very, very proud of the services and, and reputation that they've established here in Elmhurst. That said, there's always room to improve. We should never lose the innovative spirit to better serve our residents. That said, we need to innovate with incremental value and costs in mind. I look forward to the committee's report and continued dialogue. Thank you.
Hey, anyone else? Do I see anybody else? I don't see. Oh, Alderman Bram, you got your hand up. Floor is yours.
Thank you. Three points. It was mentioned in regards to cost. Cost, the Andy Legary Foundation, four years, approximately four years ago, has offered to pay the cost for, to purchase the ALS equipment. I have been informed by them that they are still to this day willing to pay for the equipment to provide advanced life support equipment on our fire engines or trucks. So there's no cost there. Labor negotiations, I see that to be zero or very minimal risk. The fire union, when we discussed this years ago, has stated, and I believe documented, that they have no intent to utilize the ability to, to perform ALS maneuvers as part of their labor negotiations. And lastly, I'll touch on saying the cart before the horse. This was first brought up four years ago. There's been analysis ever since. If we can't get the right data within four years, then we're never going to get the right data. So I don't understand on how we could be doing, putting the cart before the horse. Because this has been a topic pretty much every year for the last four years. Last piece is the Substitute Act. I'm no attorney, but from what I've seen and read, I don't see that to be an issue. Like I said earlier, it said that there's always, I forgot, potential consequences. There's potential consequences in anything we do. We haven't had an issue, other communities don't have an issue with the Substitute Act that do utilize their firefighter paramedics. So the City of Elmhurst shouldn't as well.
Any other comments? Alderman Mulliner.
Yeah, very simply, I believe the City of Elmhurst wants to save this community that we could possibly have. And I think we need to give the opportunity for the Public Affairs and Safety Committee to finish their review. They're doing a tremendous job and it's a great deal of detail that they need to go through. And I give them a lot of credit for the work and the effort that they're putting into this. And thank you very much. And thank you staff for all the effort you're putting into this. I know you'll do the best for the City of Elmhurst.
Anyone else? Alderman Deuter.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me? Yes. Two points that I just want to add to what Chairman Palmski offered. One is, and to clarify some of the earlier comments, this has not been a review that has been four years ongoing. We looked at this four years ago and did an extensive review at the same committee, Public Affairs and Safety. It was a different group of folks then. But that review four years ago ended with the conclusion of adding the rapid response vehicle. That was the conclusion. And I think now it's four years later, we are looking at the service delivery that includes that rapid response vehicle. So this is a secondary review, a subsequent review. The other point that I want to make when we talk about potential consequences is that what we heard from the city attorney during our meeting last Monday is that there is certainty around the fact that adding ALS on our engines would have bargaining implications. It's uncertain to know what that would be, but there is no doubt in his mind that if we were to add ALS capacity in the fire department, it would have an implication on our bargaining. Even if we entered into an agreement that where the firefighters told us now that they would provide the service at no cost, the agreement cannot be for an indefinite period of time. So at one point, that agreement would end and then be subject to negotiation. Thank you. Just wanted to add a couple of points.
Okay, very good. Anyone else? Mr. Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to piggyback onto what Alderman Deuter stated there related to the Substitution Act and bargaining. When the city attorney Durkin talked about it, did he give any examples of situations historical where it started off where it was, you know, in part of the agreement, but then over time, the Substitution Act was leveraged and then ultimately the contract services were, were eliminated and therefore all those services then came from the standing- the standing fire department?
Alderman Plomsky, do you want to answer that?
Well, we learned about an example of a community which provided ALS service in three portions and thirds, two contract companies and one in-house. And through a series of events, once they tried to identify the level of service that they needed to provide and adjust according to their need, that they, they attempted to cut back on their in-house service provision through a series of appeals and legal maneuvers. They were not able to follow through on that. And so we have learned, you know, when a question is posed, well, have communities experienced an issue with this and haven't they been able to work it out? I think we have learned that the biggest factor that has impacted how services are delivered is the date at which, or the time during which a municipality or a fire protection district has established its contract services or its in-house services. And, you know, was that before or after the substitutes act? So what happens is, after, you know, once services are set, we're not seeing communities deciding, you know what, we're going to move from in-house back to contract or contract back to in-house and the ability just to do that based on their own need or based on their own assessment of services. There's a lot less flexibility and as Alderman Deuter pointed out, it is a certainty, once we move a contracted service over to a union firefighter, that becomes a bargained activity. Whether or not there is an informal or even a formal agreement to say that will not be included in discussions, eventually it will be. Those contracts can't have, can't last indefinitely. And we, we were told that with certainty, there would be repercussions. And we talked in terms of pensions. So this is also in the context of taking a look at the city tax bill. When you look at your, your tax bill with the 7% that's allocated for the city, 66% of that is allocated for pension costs. So in light of the, all of the referrals pertaining to our expenditures, we want to take a look at any changes we may make in light of not wanting to increase our pension obligations. So we were, as far as risk or no risk, when our labor attorney says there are definitely consequences, and it's with certainty that it changes the playing field, I consider that a high risk. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else before we wrap up? Alderman Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to follow up to that. So if city attorney Durkin thinks this is an all but certainty, when I hear certainty, I hear cost. Has there been any thought given to what that cost would be to the taxpayers ultimately if that were to occur?
Okay, thank you. So I don't need to mute. So there, there are a number of costs to consider. You know, we've gone through a number of comparisons to see if I can pull up one that's most relevant. So should we move from our contract service to in-house, we would need to add, we would need 21 firefighters on staff. So we would need it to, to account for the level of service that, you know, at the level at which we are providing it, we wouldn't be able to do that with our existing firefighters. We would need to add staff. So we would need to take into consideration the number of firefighters that we would have to add on. We would consider the base rate. So at the level of service we're providing, we would take a look at the number, let's say there are approximately 13 who are ALS certified. We would have to allow for training for everybody else because in the meantime, we would have to only hire or only schedule people where there is somebody ALS certified to be on the clock. And that could mean in the short term, planning for overtime or some other substitutes coming in, you know, other staff people trying to cover that cost. But then also the year it would take to become certified. So a number of costs upfront just to get the program going. But if we were to take a look at approximately a 30-year, an employee of 30 years, just one salary and benefits and pension, let's say it's for a 30-year firefighter that a salary and pension costs, let's say $2,307. I'm sorry, that's for, for just one over the 30 year, it's, say, $2,307,203. So over 30 years. If we were to take a look at that for a 30-year paramedic, it's $1,149,369. So if we take a look at those, and that's just a one-to-one comparison, if we want to multiply that by, you know, 20, over time, these, this is millions of dollars. This is not a couple thousand dollars. And this makes the cost of the equipment itself negligible. So, you know, even if we were gifted a, or, you know, a grant, if we received a grant for the equipment itself, what we are looking at are the pension costs for which we have little control. And, and we've also learned that when there may be less of a need in one area, we also lose the ability to determine the number of staff that are required to be there or are appropriate to be there. So there are, it's a domino effect of, once we, Attorney Durkin said, once you open the door, you can never close it. The question becomes, to what extent does it continue to open? So that's one thing that I think we learned, that this is with or without the cost covered for the equipment itself, millions of dollars. And with certainty, things would change, but a high risk for long-term financial consequences.
Okay, I'm going to try to give Alderman Plomsky a break here. This sometimes happens when we're giving updates, but you can tell just by a handful of questions that were asked, the level of detail that the committee has already gone in and they themselves have said they aren't even finished. So appreciate the updates. I think they've been very informative. I would encourage any alderman or resident who has questions on this, first and foremost, I would encourage you to watch the last PA NS meeting. It's very informative. Secondly, I would ask you to contact staff or elected officials. I think that they can give you context that maybe we can't cover in a meeting via Zoom, but all good information. So with that said, I'm going to ask, is there any remaining questions or comments as it relates to this update? Okay. One thing I want to say as we wrap this conversation up, and I said this at the end of the last meeting. No, okay. First and foremost, obviously, I live in this town and every council member, elected official and a good chunk of the staff. Oh, Danny, can you mute?
No, clearly.
There we go. Sorry about that. Okay. So just, it's what I said at the end of the last meeting, which is out of respect for the work the committee had to do. But, and good points by a lot of folks, Alderman Deuter brought up, we, we looked at this four years ago. It's really an obligation for us to look at this kind of stuff periodically. And last time's result was the rapid response car, which I think has been wildly successful. But in a more, to put more of a fine point on it, all of us live in this town, have families in this town, have kids, parents, in-laws, if you're lucky enough like me. And, you know, it's up to us to take a look at what data is available, what we think is necessary and what, how we provide emergency services to our residents is something we take very serious. And anybody who lives in town or has a family in town takes it equally as serious. So I appreciate the work the committee's done. It is not a knock at all on our paramedics or our firefighters. I think without exception, there's, everybody in this room thinks they do an exceptional job. But this is just kind of an ongoing review of what we do. As it relates to ALS on the engines, I would encourage everybody to watch the last meeting. Lots of opinions, lots of facts. There is something called the substitution clause that if certain duties are performed by firefighters, then it doesn't matter, by law, they're allowed to ask to do that in the future. And that's just a fact of life. That's, that's almost verbatim what our attorney said. So with that substitution clause, that ultimately that could result in the removal of how we currently provide our ALS services at an increased cost. I think Alderman Levin put it very well, is that's a choice. It's a fact, but it's a choice. So we can look at it, see what the balance is. We heard Alderman Deuter say potentially millions of dollars a year. Well, I'm looking forward to the committee's final conclusion on that. So with that, I'm going to wrap up. Thank the committee for their hard work. I appreciate it. As always, questions are always welcome. And individual aldermen, if you have specific questions you haven't gotten answered or haven't gotten answered when you review the last meeting, please submit them to staff or the committee because this, this is the time to do it. This is what they're doing. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Clerk Tamer. I know that she has a report.
Thank you, Mayor. Our consolidated general elections coming up on April 6, Tuesday, April 6. City Hall will be open for early voting beginning this Saturday, March 22, in the city council chambers here, March 22 and ending on Saturday, April 3. The hours are Monday through Friday, 8:30 a.m. until 7 o'clock p.m. And Saturday is 9 a.m. to 5 p.m. For additional locations and extended hours, please visit DuPage County Election Commission or call DuPage Election Commission at 630-407-5600. More information is on our city website. And also, just want to announce tomorrow at 3:30 p.m., the Youth Commission Job and Volunteer Fair will be live with links. We had to get a little creative and do it differently this year. So the jobs and volunteer opportunities will be on our website. A few companies and organizations did do videos to welcome the kids as well. So you can find that link on the city of Elmhurst website as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other reports? Alderman Levin.
Did I say that? Thank you. Monday. I apologize.
That's okay. Repeat that date again. I got about half.
Monday, March 22. I'm sorry. And I meant till Saturday, April 3. Thank you.
Okay, early voting from the 22nd to the 3rd.
Correct.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
That's all right. Any other comment, any other reports? Seeing none, I will enter, other business, on to other business. Any other business? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Alderman Deuter, second by Alderman Brennan. Since we have folks on the phone, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote.
Hey, Hill.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Hark.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Hanquist. Brennan.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Veremis.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Plomsky.
Aye.
14 ayes and 0 nays.
14 ayes, 0 nays. Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.